Okay, so we have the thumbs up, so I'll call to order the committee of the whole agenda meeting of January 23, 2025. At this point in time, I will ask if there are any declarations of interest on this committee, the whole agenda. Not seen any hands go up, we'll move on to, we have one item business arising from the minutes. Item 3A is the committee structures of Gray County Council. We had a good earnest discussion about that at the last meeting and the notice provided by councillor Eccles at the meeting held on January 9, 2025. The recommendation is that staff be directed to prepare a report that examines the structure of the committee of the whole and the committee system. Madam Clerk, I'll look to you to speak, but at this point in time, I'll call for a mover in a second or before we go into discussion. May I ask for a mover a second? Moved by councillor Eccles, seconded by councillor Hutchinson. Okay, it's now on the floor for discussion. Madam Clerk, if you could please provide your comments based on the process.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And further to the meeting of January 9, should this motion pass, staff will bring forward a report to the February 13 meeting that looks at the committee of the whole and our committee system and just provides you kind of what the existing structure is and some examples that have been in place and in use in the past. And some, likely some further questions for county council looking for your feedback on things that you might like to see going forward. So we'll await the direction from county council.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And Deputy CAO Schertz, sir, did you have anything to add to that? You did hear all of the various different discussion pieces, so I'll look to you.
Yeah, nothing further to add at this time from Latrosavas, as the clerk noted. Staff will work to bring that report forward at the next committee whole meeting, and we look forward to the discussion at that time.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll look to county, to council, if there are committee of the whole members, if there are any questions. Okay, not seen any hands then. Oh, we do have one. I'll go to councillor Greg.
Thank you. And I think I heard from the clerks that staff will intend on bringing back some historical context to this. I'm glad to hear that. Were projected $1.031 million in the 2026 budget for governance. That's the council line item, and that's north of $57,000 per councillor. If I remove the remuneration for the warden, that's still north of $55,000 per councillor. I'm not sure what the impetus was in Simcoe County, but they're sending it out, looking for a triple majority to reduce the size of their council from 32 to 16. So I think it's an important conversation that we have as part of that report coming forward is to the cost of governance, where we've elevated ourselves to at this time. I'm familiar, I believe Deputy CAO Schertz likely recalls a time around this table where committees were constructed of five individuals on those committees, and they ran efficiently and effectively. And there were elections to get to sit on committees, and if you didn't get elected to sit on the committee, then you had the ability to run pre-election on another committee. So I think it's certainly prudent of us to explore the actual cost of governance and where we've landed ourselves at this time and the effectiveness of doing so.
Okay, thank you councillor Greg. Any other comments? Not seen any further hands, then I'll call the vote, all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you. All right, we do have one delegation, and so at this point in time, I would like to welcome the chief operating officer of Bruce Power, Mr. Skonyak, to come forth to the podium. Sorry, the lectern, you're not standing on that, so it's the lectern. I'm a good toastmaster, I know the difference. Welcome.
Very well, thanks for having me. And as I always say, my father's Mr. Skonyak, I'm James. So I'm here for a couple of reasons, and just in terms of using the time today, what I thought I would do is start with an annual Bruce Power update, which has become a tradition that we've had for a number of years. Happy to take some questions if there's time, and then I had a short presentation recognition I also wanted to make on behalf of the company. So thanks very much for having me. It sounds like it was a fantastic Roma conference, and one of the consistent themes, I'm sure you'll hear in your update later on Roma is just the dominance of energy in that discussion. There's really three key things that I really would leave with county councillors here today from a Bruce Power and broader energy development perspective. The first is the work that we are doing in our region here continues to track very well to our original cost and schedule plan. So today on the Bruce Power site, we're generating 30% of Ontario's electricity. We're doing it safely, we're doing it reliably, and our recently returned to service unit number six, which completed its refurbishment in 2023, is actually our highest performing unit. And for those of you around the table that, like any infrastructure, it's great to finish an infrastructure project on time and on budget, but it's most important that when that infrastructure project is complete, that it delivers what it's supposed to deliver. And so I think that's a very, very important message, especially as the shift in energy has shifted to energy security, which I'll talk about more in a couple of minutes. The reliability of the units is really important. At Bruce Power, we're really running a marathon while we're changing our shoes, having a hip and knee replacement, and also being on a diet. That's effectively what we're doing at the same time. But that reliability remains important. Our refurbishment program is currently focused on unit number three, so we're currently reassembling that reactor. And on February 1, we'll take down reactor number four and start the disassembly and the reassembly of that. And so we're well now into the step-by-step incremental approach to refurbish the units. And this year will be one of our peak years in terms of capital investment in our assets. We expect to spend $3 billion into our assets this year. It's really the peak of our construction. For those of you at the municipality and the county level who pay into the Omer's pension plan, you're 49% owner in Bruce Power. And so, you know, I always remind people that we are investing for the long run. And even though we produce a very low-cost, affordable product to consumers, we also have a responsibility to deliver these projects and deliver our commitments to pensioners in Ontario and our investors, and all that remains on track. The other area that gets a tremendous amount of attention is how we're growing the site and how we're expanding the capability. You've heard a lot about medical isotopes, and Mayor Body is the co-chair of the Southwest Isotope Coalition. And I know a number of municipalities have been a part of that. But we've now celebrated over two years of reliable isotope production. Just last week, a new drug called Pluvicto was approved for use in Ontario. It's a treatment for prostate cancer that has been used around the world. But the first great thing is we have a publicly funded healthcare system here in Canada, and it was added as a treatment. The first Pluvicto treatment in Ontario was administered in London, Ontario, to a gentleman from Dundalk, who was suffering with prostate cancer. And so it's very easy to get focused on the technical items we're advancing and the work to make medical isotopes and all of the strategy. And I thought the article in the One Sun Sun Times was just a really good reminder for us of why we're really doing it. So we will continue to remain a dominant isotope provider with everything we're doing. We also are continuing to progress with Bruce C, the impact assessment. It, just before the holidays, we received what we call a notice of commencement, so it's that we're into the federal process. And the federal process is a very, what I would call clinical and methodically laid out process. And what we've committed to doing to the, with the communities, municipalities, and the Soggy Nijibwe Nation is that we will take extra time in the Bruce C process, if necessary, proactively working with the community, so people have the opportunity to engage and have that input. So you'll hear technical terminologies that I know the county will get notified on, on what they call the clock starting and stopping. That's really something that Bruce Power, as the proponent, has the ability to trigger where we want communities to have more time to be engaged. And so we're taking some more time to engage with the municipalities and with the Soggy Nijibwe Nation here over the next few months. So when you hear those notifications, it's not a signal that things are behind schedule or they're not moving. It's a signal that we want to invest the time upfront to engage people. And as I always say, nuclear, if you want to, you need to go slow to go fast. The final thing I'll cover before we open up for questions is there's a tremendous amount of focus on the Canada-US relationship and the work that Premier Ford has done as Chair of the Council of the Federation, putting forward an AMCAN energy security strategy. I just want to emphasize just how important the work our region is to that. So if you look at the amount of electricity that we export on a net basis to the US, Bruce Power's, on average, we can't track electrons, is about 30% of that. For 30% of the supply in Ontario, we're 30% of the export. So that's important in terms of our inter ties with the US. The US is the largest radio pharmaceutical market in the world. Our isotopes go to the US. And we have a tremendous amount of collaboration as an industry with the United States. And so there's a huge opportunity before us to have strong collaboration with our US neighbours when it comes to energy supply and energy security. And our region is going to play an important role in that, and it's going to lead to, despite what you may read in the newspaper, I think it's going to lead to a very constructive, mutually beneficial win-win relationship between our two jurisdictions. So with that, I'll stop there. I'd be happy to answer any questions from members of county council.
Thank you very much. And so I will put it out for county council, sorry, committee of the whole members, if they have any questions. And I'm not seeing any. Oh, there we go. We're going to start with councillor Kentner.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs. James, it's maybe too early, but I wondered if you had anything to say about the Joint Chiefs letter that I looked up this morning.
There you go. That's why you gave me an orientation. I'm already messing it up. I'm like, I don't need an orientation. I don't use a microphone until I don't know how to use it, right? So yeah, so we received a copy of the Joint Chief Letter. Here's sort of my, I mean, Bruce Power wasn't kind of mentioned in that reference. And I mean, at the end of the day, the Soggy Nijibwe Nation have been absolutely consistent that they do want to see the resolution of legacy issues related to the Bruce site, going back to the 1960s, going back to the establishment of the Western Waste Management Facility. And that facility, which is operated by OPG, will continue to receive waste. Now, I don't want to speak on behalf of the NWMO or OPG, I'll leave that to them. But I think the SON have been consistent on this. And what we're focused on in our relationship with the SON is firstly, always recognizing we're operating on their traditional territory. A commitment to, through the base operations, set potential new nuclear site through the base operations, like our isotope partnership. How do we create win-win partnerships where we can provide the SON more economic and other opportunity in what we're doing on the site? How do we continue to have an open dialogue about their concerns on what we're doing today and what we're doing in the future? And we would encourage the organizations that SON is mentioning in the letter, that we think it's a good thing to go and sit down and work to, in the spirit of reconciliation, make progress on those items. So I think it's a very consistent letter with the position that SON has taken in the past. And wherever we can play a role on our, you know, what our role is, we're committed to doing that. We, just like our work that we've talked about here in Gray County, on the SON Traditional Territory as a rights holder, we want to do everything we can to earn their support. That's the goal. So I think the chiefs have laid that position out clearly many times. And we have to keep focused on making progress.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Any other questions from, I will go over to councillor Body.
Thank you, James. I've probably got three questions. Major component replacement is ongoing. Out of eight reactors, how many are left to do and sort of the approximate time on that? Second question area is Bruce C and D. Obviously, this is one of the most studied pieces of land in the country, ongoing all the time. And it's going to take a while to go through the study for Bruce C. I assume either you're looking at a study in the whole piece of property or different locations on that property. Are you, you don't have to answer this maybe, but are you looking at different locations thinking Bruce C and D is happening? And if we're adding a Bruce C, that's potentially another four reactors, so getting us up to 12 or more. Where's the limit on isotope production and where can we get to? Thanks.
Yes, happy to answer those. So the first question on MCR, so we have eight reactors, one to eight. Units one, two, and six are complete. Unit three is halfway complete. Unit four will start February 1. Unit five will start October 1 of 2026. Unit seven will start October 1 of 2028. And unit eight will start October 1 of 2030. So that's the sequence. We may move it a month here or there, but that's how we're trying to lock in the schedule. Because what that allows us to do is maintain system reliability while we're doing it. So we never have more than two units off in MCR. So let's answer your first question. Second question is, we use the term Bruce C because like it's an easy way to articulate the project. You have Bruce A, we have Bruce B, Bruce C. But think about what we're doing as an impact assessment is getting an approval for a maximum number of megawatts, which is 4,800 megawatts. So chances are, we would never build a plant, like new units, you build individual units in pairs or individually. So Bruce C is sort of what we call it, because it's a way to articulate the project, but it's really the ability to go up to almost 5,000 megawatts more on the site, which could be four units, three units, depending on the design type, SMR. So the number of units it tends to, you're really, and we're looking at the full 2,300 acres. It is the most studied 2,300 acres, I would imagine, in the world. I can't prove that, but nobody can disprove it either. So maybe that means it's proven. And we have stated very clearly to the federal government, we need streamlined regulatory processes in Canada. We can't get large infrastructure built as fast as we need to in Canada. That is separate from indigenous engagement and consultation. I want to stress that. But we are, if you look at where Canada is relative to the rest of the world, we are far too slow when it comes to advancing large infrastructure projects. It's a productivity gap. And there's the right things being said, but we need to see the action. In the recent fall economic statement, which clearly didn't get passed, there was actually some really good progress in there on this issue. So we're seeing it. But what I would say is, is that we can't underestimate the infrastructure challenge ahead of us as Canada, and we need to move faster. Again, when I say fast, I mean with the federal processes. If we're going to take time, we should take it with the surrounding communities and with indigenous peoples. That's where we take the time, not on frankly red tape in some of these areas. Where there's a safety issue or an environmental, absolutely, we spend the time on that. So I think that's an important distinction. I think the industry, we have to be very careful. When we talk about an expedited regulatory process, we don't want to send the public the message that we want to not focus on safety, the environment, or engagement with indigenous people. So that's where the balance. On isotopes, we could have an isotope production system on every reactor at Bruce Power. So I mean, there is really no limit. We, right now, we are using the equivalent power of a match for all of our isotope production, and our reactors have the sun of power. It's literally that scale. So there's no limit. I mean, I'm sure there's some, but I can't foresee, foresee in the next 15 years. We could, so we can be an isotope superpower as communities. If you don't mind, I just wouldn't mind just a quick recognition, if that's okay. I know, oh, sorry.
Yes, I just wanted to get all the question and answers, just to preserve the time appropriate for that next step that I know that you're about to do. But I don't see any further hands up. Oh, we do. We have over here councillor McQueen.
You, Madam Warden. Good morning, everyone. And thanks for presenting today, James. So my question generally is, as we were at Roma, and they talked about the new site for the medium and low nuclear waste in Agnes. Do you have any comments there?
Yes, so the NWMO went through a process. They narrowed it down to two communities, and they picked a host community. So firstly, we think it's great that the NWMO has selected a site. There were clearly a lot of people locally that had hoped that site would be here. And, but they have selected a site. Their, the NWMO's process was to select a site that had municipal support and First Nations rights holders support, and they secured that with Agnes on a timetable they set out. There's clearly a lot of views on that locally that I won't weigh into. We're focused now on, on number one, you know, what can we do to support the next stage of that process? But also recognizing that even though NWMO is going to look at that facility there, which is a long-term investment, there's still a need for waste management in the long term. And I think that was really what the SON was referring to in their letter, right? And so we have to acknowledge that. So, you know, it's a process, it yielded a result. To me, this was never a technical issue. It was a political issue in terms of where it went. Technically, you could put these DGRs in any location in southern and northern Ontario safely. The selection is really around that willing host piece.
Follow up?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden. And thanks for those comments. And I guess my thought is, at least you have one piece of the pie sort of settled up for moving forward and expansion. And, you know, there's that sense of assurance that that's going to be taken care of, I guess, is right.
Okay, thank you. I would like us to be able to, I don't see any further hands now, move to the second part of the reason why you're here.
There, well, thank you very much. I didn't mean to rush last week. So I wasn't able to make it here. And by the way, on the new warden, congratulations. I don't have to congratulate you, or, you know, like, it's a difficult job, and you get all the complaints. So, but thank you for taking on, thank you for taking on the role, but not from Bruce Power Warden. And we look forward to working with you in your new capacity, and thank you for stepping up for such an important leadership role. I do want to take this opportunity to recognize the former warden, Brian Milne. And I wasn't able to make it in December. I think there was a, hoping to get on the agenda, and then there was some weather. But one of the things that I have really come to learn in my role working at Bruce Power over the last 20 years is we often talk about how you can't make investments and you can't be successful as a business, especially the business we're in, without strong policy support. There's nothing more that'll scare investors away than policy that is not stable. And one of the key prerequisites to good policy is people that will, are willing, and all of you around the table fit this bill, more than fit this bill, people that are willing to step up in public service, whether it's at the municipal level, the county level, provincial level, federal level. And I often say this, and people kind of laugh, but I actually like working with politicians. I do. They're good people who have stepped up to make a difference. You may not always agree with them. But they really make an important difference. And so former warden Milne, I wanted to present to you, and I'll give you a little bit of history on this. Some of you have seen this at other Bruce Power events. But a number of years ago, we had a local tattoo artist from King Carden take a fly over the site. And with a pencil, he sketched out an aerial view of the Bruce Power site that's absolutely beautiful. And so we give these out for special recognition and special occasion. If you would prefer, we can get a tattoo on your back. But I would suggest you go with this. But I really wanted to share this and thank former warden Milne for everything, whether it was at AML, Roma, where there's events in the community, whether it was coming out to some of, you know, having discussions with us. He was always there and made time for us. And your time as leaders is very valuable, and I really think contributed in a big way to what we achieved. So this recognition reads Brian Milne, Gray County Warden, 2023 to 2024. On behalf of Bruce Power, we extend our gratitude for your leadership and support. So thank you very much, sir.
If I could just respond, Madam Warden. I'm almost speechless, but not quite. James is Bruce Power. I mean, James is the face and the voice of Bruce Power. And he has that ability to make people like me understand what they're trying to do. And for me, at least, as James alluded to, the technical pieces of nuclear energy aren't really that important to me. The piece that really brings it home for me is the cancer fighting isotopes. And James is a huge supporter and a huge booster of that program. And that really brings it home to the community. And how important it is to have people like James and John, don't forget John. John Peever's a big piece of this as well. How important it is to have people like these two gentlemen in our community to guide us along and make sure the right things happen at the right time. So that's all I can say for now without really screwing it up. So I'll leave it at that. And again, James, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you very much, both gentlemen. But before you leave, sorry, I was just also being whispered to in my ear from the clerk. But thank you very much for both of you for attending today, and thank you for the recognition that you provided for one of our own who has truly dedicated his time in providing the leadership in the past two years. And this is an example of how it came to reality. So thank you, and I appreciate your words for me taking the role of warden. What I can say too is, very early in the new term, the new warden of Bruce County, Luke Charbonneau, the two of us got together, and we had lunch together, and we decided, you know, this is the opportunity for us to do this on a regular basis. So we do very much see our two counties as sisters in this, and that is, your reach stretches well beyond county boundaries. So we do look forward to the continued partnership with you. Thank you. Okay, so the clerk has advised that she would like it if we would do a a five-minute break. We just need to catch upon some technicalities in terms of our cameras and our technical crew. So we'll take a break for five minutes and reconvene at 10:00 too. Thank you. Okay, we are now at ten two. So I would like to call committee, the whole members back to their seats and we'll look for the participation online. I see the screens coming back online as well. And we do have a quorum, so we're able to continue. Okay, so welcome back, everyone. Thank you. We are now at item six, which is the consent agenda. So the recommendation is that the following consent agendas be. Items be received and that staff be authorized to take actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports and. That the correspondence be supported or received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. So may I ask for a mover and a seconder? Oh, I guess I should ask for a polled items first. Okay, so I'm gonna ask if there are any items. We have item six, A, B, C, and D. Any ones? Okay, Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and I did the poll six A.
Okay, so six A has been pulled. Any others? Not seeing any hands online. Nor here in the chamber. Okay, so with the exception of six A, then I'll look for a mover and a seconder that we receive the the rest as per. What was read. Thank you. So I'll take moved by Deputy Warden Milne and seconded by Counselor Greg. It's now on the floor for discussion to receive the other items of the consent agenda, not six A. Okay, so seeing no hands for that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor. Thank you. And that motion is carried and we'll revisit item six A at the end when we get to item eight, which is other business. So that allows us to move on to the items for direction and discussion. And we just have two of them here and one won't require a. A resolution, a motion to be passed, but seven A does. So. With that, I'll read it out and they'll look for a mover and a seconder to get it on the floor for discussion. And then I'll look to Director Schaff to introduce that topic. So. The recommendation is that C S R C W O one two five Rose Lane redevelopment architectural requirements be received. And that in order to qualify for new funding opportunities for a forty unit affordable housing build in Dundalk for a class B. Construction cost estimate be completed and tender ready, ready construction drawings to be be prepared. That staff be directed to move forward with phase two of the contract with J P M Architectural Inc. To provide the required architectural services at a cost of one hundred and fifty four thousand five hundred excluding H S T. And that the costs be funded from the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. May I ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor De Green, seconded by Counselor Eccles. So it's now on the floor for discussion. So I'll look to Director Shaw.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Good morning, County Council. So a county owned building in Dundalk was identified for redevelopment as part of our Affordable Housing Action Plan. The site is located at one thirty Rose Lane. It is currently a seven unit building that is in the midst of being demolished. The site has approximately one acre of redevelopable land and we are proposing to build a forty unit building consisting of sixteen bachelor apartments. And twenty-four one bedroom. In August first, on August first, two thousand twenty-four, the Community Services Committee. At the Community Services Committee meeting, we J P M Architecture. Was awarded the architectural tender for the build in the amount of three hundred and forty eight thousand two hundred and fifty. Exclusive of H S T. J P M Architecture is formerly Allen Avis Architecture and has done quite a few affordable builds. In fact, they were the architect. That we worked with for the Fourteenth Street redevelopment. The tender itself was divided into three schedules depending on funding and funding opportunities. Schedule one for seventy five thousand seven hundred and fifty was to provide drawings ready for site plan approval. Architectural drawings and a class C estimate. We applied to Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation and we received. But fifty one thousand five hundred dollars in seed funding to go towards this schedule one. We're now asking to fund schedule two. Schedule two is a hundred and fifty four thousand five hundred. It will get us a full set of architectural drawings that are required in order to apply for funding. And also give us a the the minimum class B estimate that is required in order to move forward with with funding that is available. A couple of funding opportunities have come up. One was just announced in December. It is from Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation. It's a program called the Affordable Housing Fund. It provides up to seventy five percent of the cost of the build through a combination of a loan. And a grant. The grant is significantly higher than in previous programs at thirty percent of the seventy five percent. And if we're successful, it will allow us to move forward with the build. So in order to apply, we do require a minimum of a class B estimate. At this time, we only have a class C estimate. It also has to start within a hundred and twenty days of signing an agreement for the funding. Recently, some funding from the province was announced also called the Last Mile Funding. And it also has stipulation of being able to start within a hundred and twenty days. Of signing an agreement. So in order to meet that requirement, we do need to have a full set of tender drawings ready. Hundred and twenty days then would give us time to go out for an R F P. It would give us time to. Get site plan approval at the local level and then be shovel ready within that timeframe. So we're asking to, we're seeking approval to move forward with the architectural services under schedule two at a cost of a hundred and fifty four thousand five hundred. Exclusive of H S T and that that be funded from our Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. There is funds available in the in the Housing Reserve Fund and with this expense taken out, there would still be a balance of. Four hundred and fifty one thousand dollars to put towards the bill. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for elaborating on the details about why this this ask is before us. So it's on the floor for discussion. I'll look and I'll begin with Deputy Warden Milne.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Anne Marie. It's, well, not unlike a lot of places, this type of housing is badly needed. In South Gate Dundalk specifically. And the community is excited to hear what might be or is hopefully going to be. So I I thank Anne Marie and her staff for identifying the need and bring this project project forward. And I would encourage everyone to support this because it is, as I say, badly needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And not seeing any hands online, we'll go over to Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. Good morning, everyone. And thanks, Anne Marie. You know, as the Deputy Warden indicated, these. Apartments certainly are required. I'm just wondering how you came up with the the termination of sixteen bachelors and twenty-four. One bedrooms and would there be an opportunity for, my understanding is it's individuals that are. Individuals are requiring or certainly on the waiting list, there's a lot more single individuals as opposed to family members. Would we have an opportunity to increase the number of bachelor units if we reduce the number of one bedroom? Thank you.
In order to make the building viable, we needed to include some market units. So right now that does include ten market units. So ten market units, a one bedroom for someone who's going to be paying market rent is certainly more attractive than a bachelor. So that's why we did put those ten in. And we also are hoping to have some couples. So and couples usually prefer a a one bedroom also. So when we looked at our waitlist. And we looked at at what was best for the overall and actually what worked within the design of the building, these were the numbers that we came up with.
Thank you very much. And I am not seeing any further hands. In that case, then we are ready to call for this vote. I'll call the vote. All those in favor. And that is Carrie. Thank you very much. Thank you, Director Shaw. So at this point in time, we'll just give Deputy C A O Schertz a chance to come to the lectern and also after he's had a chance to. Introduced a little bit about the presentation of the conference, the Rome, the Rural Ontario Municipal Association Conference Overview. Savannah will also be adding something to that. And I just, just before you begin, I just want to say how, what a pleasure it was to see so much representation. From Gray County Council at at Roma. And I appreciate that each and every one of our county councillors, you have decisions to make. Because there are so many good conferences out there and yet we're, we're, you know, we have to make our our selections. So I appreciate. The fact that many will be attending and representing us at each and every one of our conferences because we all pick and choose what we can attend. And that's very much appreciated. But the the collegial effort that was there was incredible and it and it transpired right across the deputations. That were happening at the lower tier level as well as those that were happening at the county level. And I think we should be proud of that unison voice that we bring when we come to the greater organization. So with that. Deputy C A O, please go ahead and begin with your presentation.
Great. Thank you, Warden Mattressows, and and good morning, Council. So as as the warden indicated, on the heels of the conference, we wanted to provide an overview of some of the key highlights, some of the key takeaways. And the key announcements that we heard collectively at the conference. Staff yesterday, we combined kind of all of our notes based. We tried to divide and conquer and attend as many sessions as we could. And so we tried to combine our notes and try to highlight some of those key takeaways and announcements that we heard. That we just wanted to provide an overview for you today. So as as a warden indicated, we had a number of county councillors in attendance for the conference along with Kim. Wingrove Savannah Myers, Rob Hatton and and myself were able to attend the the conference this year at Roma. So just to start the slide deck, sorry. Okay, great. So next slide. Excellent. So just for the sake of our audience, Roma is the Rural Ontario Municipal Association. They represent rural and small urban municipalities across Ontario. And are the real voice of the Greater Association of Municipalities of Ontario. A M O and Roma contribute to policy, research, advocacy for municipalities, Ontario. As well as the people and businesses who call Ontario home. Roma is committed to promoting, supporting and enhancing strong and effective rural governments. And socially and economically sustainable rural communities today as well as into the future. Roma is a bipartisan organization and we're fortunate to have Counselor Nielsen as a as a local representative on the Roma Board of Directors. Each January, Roma hosts a conference for municipal leaders to come together, receive updates from the association, network with colleagues as as the warden indicated. Learn about important developments and discuss important issues as well as to hear from and meet with members of provincial government. And its ministries as well as opposition parties. Next slide. So Gray County, we had two delegations this year, one with the Ministry of Health and another with the Ministry of Transportation Ontario. Next slide. Thank you. For the Ministry of Health delegation, we met with Parliamentary Assistant to the Minister of Health, Anthony Liardi. Three main topics were covered for that delegation. First, that the Ministry of Health commit to providing enhanced operating and capital funding to the Hanoveran District Hospital. In recognition of the additional demands that have been placed on it due to the reduction in service at the Durham and Chesley sites. As part of the the reductions as per the South First Gray Hospital Corporation. Second, we discussed and focused on developing a systems approach to maintaining the critical healthcare network that's required. Throughout Gray County, but specifically also in Central Gray and in the town of Durham be initiated. And that the Ministry of Health provide additional funds to support access to primary care in our communities, including nurse practitioner led clinics. Long term care funding for, long term funding for community paramedicine and increased support for medical residents and family medicine to train in our communities. Parliamentary Assistant Lee already seemed engaged in the discussion, was actively taking notes and asking questions during the delegation. He did commit to further follow up through our local M P P. On how we can move forward with the requests that were put forward by the delegation. So. We will follow up with M P P buyers and Ministry of Health staff to determine how best we can move forward with the requests that were put forward. Next slide. So the second delegation, we met with Parliamentary Assistant to the Ministry of Transportation Ontario, Rick Brise. Three main topics were covered. First was a request for signage to improve safety. And access for the Gray County Transportation Depot and paramedic base that's located just north of the village of Chatsworth. Our paramedics and transportation service staff have experienced delays in terms of exiting out of that entrance. Even when lights are on, sirens are on. Vehicles are not yielding in some cases to to both our our paramedic staff and to our our highway staff. Even when the, like I said, even when we're trying to raise that awareness, they're still not stopping, unfortunately. So we've requested signage, including a flasher to. So we've requested signage, including a flasher to try to alert drivers that this is an emergency vehicle access and there are trucks and plows that are trying to also access the highway at this location. It's a very busy stretch of the highway as most have experienced, I'm sure, coming up even on county council days. It's very busy, especially during peak times. And so, so we asked for some signage and, and again, the parliamentary assistant seemed receptive to the signage requests and committed to having MTO staff work with the county to find some solutions. So we'll for sure follow up with, with the MTO staff and make sure we can try and move that forward as best we can. The second request, we also had to request around signage to improve awareness of Highway Ten crossings at the CP rail trail. There's several locations where the CP rail trail crosses Highway Ten. As council knows, that that is a well-used trail. It's a multi-user trail. We have snowmobiles on it this time of year, obviously using it, ATVs, pedestrians, cyclists using it. So we would like to, again, add some signage just to raise awareness that there are traffic crossings at key locations along that stretch of highway. Again, very receptive to looking at the solutions there. So we'll follow up with MTO staff on that. The second request was to explore opportunities to work together to streamline the permit process for MTO entrance permits for developments in Gray County. As, as I'm sure some of you have been experiencing this even amongst your member municipalities, there's been delays in terms of issuing of entrance permits that we've experienced for various developments throughout the county. We provide some examples in the township of Chatsworth specifically, we're highlighted as part of that delegation. Again, the parliamentary assistant, as well as the Assistant Deputy Minister, suggested that we set up quarterly meetings where we can further explore opportunities to streamline the permit process as well as to help them to prioritize entrance permits through those conversations and discussions, letting them know which entrance permits might be more urgent than others at that time. So we, we thought that was a good suggestion. We will follow up, of course, with MTO staff and start scheduling those quarterly meetings and work with each of the member municipalities as well to try to raise awareness about some of those entrance permit delays and look for those opportunities to streamline. The third topic covered during the delegation was to highlight that Gray County is a lead applicant on a grant funding application under the Ontario Transit Investment Fund. And that is seeking to invest and create a transit system across Gray, Bruce and Dufferin Counties. We highlighted the system will help to connect people with jobs, healthcare and regional services. And of course, that we look forward to hearing from them on our application that has been submitted to the province. Again, the parliamentary assistant was impressed by the regional collaboration by working together again with our neighbours and know that this is exactly what the intent of the funding was. So again, we're fingers crossed. We're hoping to hear some good news on that as well. So I'll just turn it over to Savannah to talk about some other announcements that were made during the conference and some other key takeaways from the conference sessions.
Good morning, County Council. Happy snowy Thursday. It has started again. This is my first time attending Roma and I was really inspired by the conversations that we had there. And I think the one reigning theme across every single session was about working together as a region, having one voice, putting our hands together because we are so much stronger. And I think that that, you know, was really inspiring because we're doing that. We've been leaders in that for a long time. We're getting stronger and stronger every single day. And it was just reinforcing all the work that we're doing in the direction we're heading. It's exactly where we need to be going. So just for me personally, I thought that was really key and pumped me up, all excited for the work to come. So the, oh, there we go. Perfect. You're very good. So a couple of big announcements were made specifically around economic development. And the first being that there is a new modernized RED program. So what used to be Rural Economic Development Program is now going to be known as the Rural Ontario Development Program. And we're seeing an increase in funding. So they've doubled the funding for the next two years from five million to ten million. I think this is really important because every one of our municipalities here taps into that program. It is probably the single greatest economic development rural program that we have because it is understanding of who we are, what we need. And the province has always been really good to continue to support that program. So to see growth in it and a real attention to it was key. And it's very much tied to the new Rural Economic Development Strategy that was announced and launched at Roma. This is something that our staff have participated in over the last year. And many of the consultations by the Minister of Rural Affairs, Lisa Thompson, who are very fortunate, is from this region. She knows who we are again and what we struggle with. And what we've seen out of this new strategy, it's called Enabling Opportunity, is that it's done a really good job of pulling together all of the different programs that the province has and identifying exactly how they apply to rural Ontario. So now we have a one stop shop that has three key pillars and it includes all of the different things happening right across the multiple ministries. And that's really important. So we don't have to spend the time trying to search out what is available, what makes sense. It's now in one space. So that will be really good for efficiencies for us. They've also noted that they will be partnering with Invest Ontario, which aligns very well to what we have spent the last year doing in terms of building our foundation and where we anticipate to go in this year of our study in economic development as we're building our due diligence. So we look forward to seeing what opportunities that might open for us to leverage the work that we're already doing. The next slide, please. There was another significant announcement from the Minister of Infrastructure around health and safety of water stream funding. So it was a hundred and seventy five million dollars was announced under the Municipal Housing Infrastructure Program. And the key to this announcement was the fact that there was real understanding that in order to build housing, as the province is looking for us to do, the infrastructure needs to be there and that is very expensive and a significant barrier across rural Ontario. So this new funding applications will be opening on February twelfth, which is a great day. That is my birthday. So we're looking forward to seeing that application open. But it really is meant to ensure that communities across the province do have access to safe drinking water and reliable wastewater services so that we're protected all the time. We tend to forget how important and critical and base function it is to have water. So we're very fortunate here in Ontario, but it's not something that we can take for granted. So that's what this announcement is centered around. For the next slide, please. And a couple of other key takeaways. The AMO Healthy Democracy Project was a really interesting full room session. And they did note that there will be a rural symposium coming up this spring. They didn't have a date or a location yet, but we are to watch. And as soon as we find out that information, we'll be sure to share it with county council. But one of the really cool tools that they have developed, and it was a very inspiring intern who was talking about this project. It was called a Democratic Engagement Solutions Box. So basically an R and D, so we can rob and duplicate website to see what best practice is happening around the province that we could easily use and put into our everyday lives. So this is something that we as staff want to take a look at and see what potential there is for us to be able to learn from. But they also said that it's an open invitation to continue putting information into it. So if there are things that we're significantly proud of that could be used elsewhere across the province, that the offer is there for us to be able to send that to Roma and AMO to be able to include. So a really neat toolbox that we want to check out. The tackling water and wastewater infrastructure challenges, this was one of the last sessions. And it was incredible. The speakers were absolutely phenomenal. And it was a panel discussion focused on the findings and recommendations of the LAS Water and Wastewater Expert Panel Report. So that report is available. I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but I, I want to now because they were so engaging and so informative sitting around that panel. And the conversation again was really focused on safe and reliable water and wastewater systems being critical to the health of Ontario's population. And knowing that only fifty percent of provinces' water and wastewater systems are actually, are being operated on a full cost recovery basis. There was real understanding that this is a huge pinch point across all of our municipalities and it is a struggle for our budgets, for our long-term planning and making sure that we can afford what we need to. And thirty to forty percent of these systems are in fair to poor condition, which is really concerning. The report looked at municipal functioning on a regional basis and exploring municipal service operations as a potential way to more effectively and efficiently operate these systems, which is very much in keeping with what we heard from Dan Matheson during our session for the inaugural Economic Development Leadership Forum, where he talked about looking at alternative ways to be able to fund significant infrastructure, knowing that we had to be able to make these decisions and investments now, but wouldn't be able to do it alone. So in follow up to the Economic Development Forum that we had hosted, we've reached out to EPCOR and as you know, will be coming in the spring. So in our next forum of the leadership forum, which will be the Warden's Breakfast in April, we will also have an education opportunity from EPCOR and they are owned by the City of Edmonton to look at what public-private partnership on a regional basis looks like for water and wastewater infrastructure. So we're really excited to be able to bring that training opportunity to you and they were a big part of this conversation as well. So those invitations will be coming out to all of county council, along with your senior staff and all of your municipal councillors as well, so that we have that opportunity to learn together and ask the questions that we need to be able to understand as we move forward. But I think the one thing, again, between all of these sessions that I was able to attend was that regional conversation and the need to be working together. So it is definitely inspiring of where we want to be able to go. And my last slide is around the Rural Health Services. Again, excellent panel discussion, looking at the role of municipalities in healthcare because that is a question that we often face. What do we do with our doctor shortages, our nursing shortages, the investments that we need in our hospitals? And they said, you know, really, the municipality has three key roles. The first one is to make sure that your communities are welcoming for everyone, for healthcare providers, which means DEI is everywhere in our community so that it's the whole of life experience that we're able to support for our healthcare workers. So one of the examples that was thrown out was a nurse who had gone to a rural community, but her child in the school system was being bullied and was not feeling at home. So they packed up and they moved to somewhere else. This is absolutely key right across the province, right across the world, really. But it's looking at that whole of life experience and putting our focus there. So the DEI side of things and the welcoming communities. And then the third suggestion was around local training and making sure that we are doing local career development to grow our own workforce. So I am beyond proud to know that between local immigration partnership that we have here in Gray Bruce and the work that we've done with Georgian College as county council and as economic development is really driving this home. We are being able to grow our local workforce because of the investments that have been made here and Georgian College's nursing programs are full. We have the Learn and Stay Grant that allows students to come and train here. If they stay here for two years, their training is paid for and that is also working. So that's a provincial program that is not well-known, but Georgian College here in Owen Sound has really driven that message and we are starting to see the results. So I think across the board, what it really reinforces is that we are on the right path. We're doing the right work, having the right conversations with the right people and we have nowhere to go but up. And the last point about the Rural Health Services, and I mean, we're putting it word for word in here because they were very blunt about it, but the Hunger Games approach to recruitment of doctors is just unacceptable. And that looks around the bonusing of bringing doctors and no paying thousands of dollars to have them here for a couple of years only to have them leave after that. It really is our role to set the conditions and support healthcare teams in our communities and that's going to be the way that we win. But it will take a collective effort right across the province to put an end to those Hunger Games. So those are my updates from Roma. I'm going to pass it back to Randy who has a couple more and then we look forward to hearing from you as well.
Thank you so much, Savannah. I should have mentioned too off the hop that we just finished a slide deck last night. So we will share this all with, with county council. I've seen some folks taking notes and pictures of the slides. So we'll be sure to share this as well as post on our, on our website so that members of public, if they're interested, can, can see the slide deck as well. So some of the other key takeaways, there were multiple sessions and references made throughout the conference about the, the recent report that was released by OMSA and AMO on the homelessness crisis that we've been experiencing throughout the province. And there was a panel discussion titled, What Can Be Done To Help End Rural Homelessness? Some of the key takeaways that we collectively just can't build our way out of this crisis. It was noted that we need to collectively deal with the root causes, including addressing some of the gaps and challenges in our healthcare system, in our justice system and as well as the mental health and addiction supports. And to take a systems-based approach when we're looking at trying to address some of those gaps and challenges in those, in those systems. It was also suggested that if we spend money wisely upfront, it will save more money in the long term. And shifting from a reactive spending with the wrong focus is, is going to be key in terms of trying to address this crisis. Panelists also noted that privacy does not exist in rural Ontario the same way it does in urban centers. So many experiencing homelessness don't want to be visible to the community. So that was a key part of some of the discussions. And so again, it's by working together between municipalities, the province and federal government is the only way we're going to tackle the homelessness crisis that we're all experiencing across the province. Next slide, please. There was also a session during the conference focusing on mental health and addiction strategies. And there was the paramedic chief from Renford County was part of the panel of that discussion. And they talked about their Mesa work that the Mesa team is doing, which is very similar to the SOS Outreach Team and the cross department and partnership work being done by our paramedic staff and our community services team. The paramedic chief from Renford County also gave a shout out to Chief McNabb and the work being done here in Gray County to address the mental health and addiction crisis that we are experiencing here, noting that Kevin is well-respected and is a leader in this area. We already knew that, but to hear from a colleague, I think it's just, it's a, it's a great shout out to, to Kevin and his team and the work that they're doing, as well as Anne Marie and her team working with community partners to really try to address some of the mental health and addictions that that we're experiencing here in Gray. The panel also noted the importance of positive impact of their programs and to share the success stories to help raise community awareness as well as community buy-in on what, what is being tackled and what is being done throughout the community. The panel also shared info about mental health resources for the agricultural community, including the Guardian Network as well as the Farmer Wellness Initiative. So those are some, some key takeaways from that panel discussion. Next slide, please. So there was lots of other sessions that staff attended and it was hard to highlight some of the key ones. But just, just, just a couple more. Staff attended navigating approvals for energy procurement under the IESO Pathways to Decarbonization Framework. We also attended a session about navigating the future of municipal waste management based on all the changes that are happening in the waste manager system that each of our member municipalities have been, have been grappling with and dealing with. There was also a session on the agricultural economic development. Gray County Planning Team got a, got a shout out at that particular session. And one of the key messages of that session, we need to preserve farmers, not just farmland. Mental health supports are critical along, along with farm diversified uses as well as value-added opportunities to enable investment into the farm. There was also a session on Airbnbs and sharing information on trends. The current trend is an increase in domestic bookings close to home, fewer advanced bookings, choosing less complicated holidays. And nearly fifty percent of guests wouldn't visit a community otherwise because there may be fewer hotel locations across rural Ontario without Airbnb and other, other services that are offered. So that's, that's the staff takeaway. I can now go to turn it over to Warden Matrasovs to talk about some of the other sessions that she was able to attend as well.
Thank you very much. And, and just before I go to the, the items that are listed on the next slide, I'm glad that Ms. Myers was able to highlight Georgian College and its impact. I can say that the week previously at the, I attended two events for the Chamber of Marine Commerce and another event for the Ontario Marine Council and Georgian College. And it's right here in the middle of Gray County in Owen Sound. The Owen Sound Campus, the Marine, the Marine Institute for Training and Research is, is making profound effects across the marine industry. And people are coming from all over the world in order to be able to study here as well as our local. In fact, one of the awards that was given out at the, at the, the dinner was somebody who was right from Clarksburg, right in the town of Blue Mountains. So it was really good to see that and celebrate that. And, and that's only one aspect of the impact that Georgian College has here in our area. So the three items, the, the three logos that are there on that screen, I will just touch briefly that it, it's been a pleasure. I've attended now one meeting of the Wardens, the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, and then we all continue to, we spent all of Monday together and then into Tuesday morning presenting to, to delegations to each of the, the opposition caucuses as well as to ministries too. And the, I won't, I won't go into too many details, but in each case, we customized our pitch to each of the different audiences depending on to whom we were presenting. But we talked about the four different strategies that the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus uplifts. And that does include housing, infrastructure, workforce to support economic growth and mental health addictions and homelessness. So you can hear, you know, all the commonalities going right across. And that is the beauty of it is that when there is something that we hear in our lower tier municipalities and then here at our county level are experiencing, which is just the same as what's happening next door, it makes sense to come with one uplifted amplified voice together to look for solutions. And certainly the response of those delegations from the ministry was always very appreciative that we, we were bringing solutions to the table. And certainly, the response of those delegations from the ministry was always very appreciative that we we were bringing solutions to the table, highlighting some of the extra challenges. In general, one of the one of the key messages from the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus is from a rural perspective, from our small towns and our and our wide-spaced rural counties, to deliver the same services and the same level of service is different than in centre in the centre of London or in Toronto. So the dollars, if the dollars are just distributed evenly, that doesn't go as far for us because we have bigger transportation issues, we have bigger issues about bringing the services to those in need. We talked about, Randy mentioned about how, you know, one of the one of the key messages that we hear from those who are in need of services is the need to keep anonymous in small communities because they don't want their grade-two teachers seeing them there on the street, and they're they're trying to hide, and we need to reach out and find those who need. And that was certainly not just what we experienced, but right across all of the counties and the representation from the other wardens that that I heard. I also wanted to, as I mentioned at the beginning, I was so pleased to see so so much participation from Gray County, both the lower-tier councillor members as well as as those that are sitting around the table here today, and particular appreciation for those who were able to stay post-conference. After the conference ended, there there were a couple of events. There actually one Conservation Ontario held held an event just on the the final evening, and then the next day, the Great Lakes and St Lawrence Cities Initiative also provided an opportunity for a roundtable, both focusing on coastal resilience. And it was really good to see how many members were able to attend those. I did very much appreciate that. And although that was the focus of those, and and we're celebrating that we can finally talk about the funding, the federal funding that's come this way, and the partnership between those two organisations, the pilot projects might not be here in Gray County, but they but they are the they are the pilot projects, is to show us what can be done. And one of them is very close in Huron County, another one up in Thunder Bay, and another one down in Niagara, of working together on making sure that that the effects of climate change and the effects of the changing environment can be mitigated in terms of building that resilience along coastal, the coastal side, and the kind of economic impact that has when you look at, as we all look at insurance, for example, about trying to make sure that places in flooding areas and in along these these fragile coastal areas can still maintain and be insured the way that they need to. So those were all part of the discussions that were there, very effective. But there are other legs of the Great Lakes and St Lawrence Cities Initiative is also about the water equity, and that's the the one that I sent as a co-chair for, the Ontario co-chair for. The water equity for us is different than what it looks like in the States, but it's very much in line with what was what was announced in terms of the health and safety and water stream funding. Because that's what we're talking about when we talk about equity, is making sure that each and every one of our our communities and our neighbouring communities, which includes our indigenous communities, have access to the funding needed to provide that safe water infrastructure, both water and wastewater infrastructure, and how 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 pressing it is that we continue to make sure that that's a delivered services that we can provide. And then the other part is the economic growth, and and that's another pillar of the Great Lakes and St Lawrence Cities Initiative. Of course, how it relates to the Great Lakes Basin. But boy, oh, boy, is that ever a hot topic now, as half of our membership are on the United States side. So as things are changing on the federal level, and we are looking to see what kind of relate, what kind of impact the new US relations are going to have for us, it's going to be really important that our voices here at the lower tiers are are echoed and raised up when they're having those national international conversations, because the impact will be great. And and it's going to be a challenge for each and one of us as leaders in our community to find out the businesses in our own communities who are going to be affected by supply chain, who are going to be affected by projects they may be engaged in or hope to be engaged in on the US side, and whether or not they're going to go through. Exporting as well, we have some some big players in our county, and and it's going to be a good piece of homework for us to come together and find out what those impacts are, and then use organisations such as the Great Lakes and St Lawrence Cities Initiative and the the conduit of dialogue that's already there in the Great Lakes Commission, for example, to be able to say, here's where we are for the next four years, how are we going to work together to make sure that we can uplift what what's happening on this side with our counterparts? So with that, I would like to, I would like to put it out to other council, other committee of the whole members who wanted to add anything to the very, thank you, very detailed, thoughtful presentation that staff has provided for us, but any other other significant pieces that they wish to add from their experience. Thank you, Councillor Nielsen. We're going to start with you.
Thank you very much, Warden Matrasov, and thank you to yourself and staff for the great words on how the Roma Conference went. Just a couple of things to add from the board perspective. This was actually the most attended Roma Conference in its history. Last year, we had nineteen hundred and sixty-three delegates, approximately somewhere around there. We actually broke two thousand delegates for this conference, as well as over seven hundred delegations with ministers from across. So we're very proud of how the Roma Conference continues to be a a great grounds for communication and delegations with ministers. Just a specific thing I wanted to share myself was the Roma Board itself had an opportunity to have a multi-minister meeting with Minister of Municipal Affairs, Minister of Health, and the Minister of just escaped my mind. Rural Affairs, sorry. And in the delegation, Roma highlighted its three targets, which aren't unsimilar to the comments you brought forward, Warden Matrasov. Homelessness, healthcare, and infrastructure. I had an opportunity during that particular meeting to highlight infrastructure in terms of rural bridges. So a lot of our rural municipalities cover a larger geography and therefore cover a lot more rivers and streams that cause for need for different bridges and the kind of the infrastructure deficit around that particular item. One thing else I wanted to add, the comments from Savannah on the Water and Wastewater panel. This, the one financial speaker as part of that, spoke to the development charges and how this current attack on development charges from provincial leaders is ungrounded when it comes to water and wastewater. How else are we trying to collect the funds to try to cover these systems? Both Premier Ford, who spoke for opportunity at the Roma Conference, and I believe it was Bonnie Crombie, leader of the Liberal Party, both spoke to platforms being to limit, or in some cases, either the role leader even spoke to removing development charges and how I don't think they quite understand the impact that that would play specifically on rural municipalities, and how we have a limited tax base to try to afford the infrastructure. So just a couple of things, one down there. Thank you very much for staff for such a detailed presentation.
Thank you very much for that, and I'll look to see if there are any other additional comments. We'll go to Councillor Dobrine.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs. It's more of a comment that throughout the conference, the number of times that I was listening to the panels, to presentations in the concurrent sessions was Gray County does that. The number of times that long-term care came up, and we could actually sit and and say, but we do that. And so it's that sharing of ideas. That's what I found really informative and enlightening, let's just say. But I love this collaborative effort of divide and conquer at the sessions that staff took on, and we try to do that in, it's hard to get to all the sessions. But I love this collaborative presentation as well, because we didn't get to all of those sessions, and I wanted just to thank staff for for pulling this together on such short notice.
Thank you. And any other comments? Yes, Councillor McQueen.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Madam Warden, County Council. I think it was good that we have this report. I always find it's good to reflect on when we attend and what we learned and what we, as you said, we can't can't attend all the sessions. I know at our council, we try to divide it up, people's where, and you know, try to have that as well. But I will say, one of the things that I did hear necessarily from the conference, but from colleagues of of mine and 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 other councillors from our lower tier was, there was no Gray County there. And I heard that a lot, and and a place to go and and mingle and and talk and and it's, you know, we have the super-tier part of mayors and and deputy mayors, but it's to be able to, and we've done it in the past, that that room for all the councillors to attend. So I I think there's a lot of value in that, and it doesn't have to be very expensive, but it's just a place to go and have that conversation. And as you are quite aware, Madam Warden, twenty twenty, when I was Warden, I really put an emphasis emphasis on doing that and bringing people together and bringing other people into our room, because the conversations don't stop. And I know Wellington, and I I attended the Wellington Room, and a lot of their councillors were in that room talking and and that, so just I heard that from some of our, you know, some of the councillors that sit on our our nine municipalities that did attend, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councillor McQueen, and I'd like to actually respond to that because I did make an inquiry on on the capabilities, and unfortunately, with the budget that we have, we are able to do a collective dinner in order to be able to invite all of the lower-tier council membership that is also in attendance at AMO. But we don't have the money to be able to do two separate dinners for Roma and AMO. So I did convey that that messaging to as many people as as we could as well. I do understand that the, and I do remember the the previous tradition about the about the hospitality room, but also under the leadership of Deputy, sorry, Deputy Warden Milne. I know that we did do a shift where we actually gathered together for dinner instead. I know that there's liability issues involved, and there is also costing involved, and we are all looking at a very tight budget. We're all trying to make sure that we're using our dollars as as carefully as we can. So it's my understanding that that's been the shift and the change. So that would need to be a greater council discussion if we wanted to do something to change in between. But I do look forward to the the opportunity, AMO will have even more representation from from our lower-tier council members as well. And I really enjoyed the 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 way in which people were able to actually meet each other and talk to each other at was what was done under the leadership of Deputy Warden Milne, and look forward to that kind of engagement, just like you do. Follow up, Councillor McQueen?
Thank you for those comments, and I would just say from, this is the upper tier of the lower-tier municipality, have those conversations with your councillors. Just hear back from what they felt and what they were missing, because I I heard it a lot.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go to Councillor Ma.
Thank you, Warden, and I've heard similar comments. You know, the the dinner that we had with all the lower tiers last year, that was a wonderful event. But having an opportunity to to go and debrief and to speak to other members and invite people to a spot, you know, to recognise the funding restraints. There may be ways around that if lower tiers all contributed or individual members contributed. So I think it's something we shouldn't lose sight of and maybe follow up on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So as I mentioned, that would be a good, good collective dialogue to have right across the county council table, and and as Councillor Mackie has mentioned, it might require a conversation at the lower tiers as well, so thank you. Any other comments? Okay, well, thank you. In that case, then, we will now return to our other business. We are at twenty minutes to twelve, so we're at other business item eight, and there was one item pulled, which was six A. And so with that, I will look, first of all, we'll put the recommendation on the floor for discussion, and then I'll look to Councillor McQueen, who had requested that this be pulled. So it's recommended that report PDR CW zero six two five regarding an overview of the county draft plan of subdivision application forty-two T twenty twenty-one oh six, known as Musial Subdivision, on lands legally described as part of lots sixteen and seventeen, in session nine, geographic township of Osprey, now in the municipality of Gray Highlands, be received for information. May I ask for a mover and a seconder so we can move into discussion? Okay, moved by Councillor Greg, seconded by Councillor Mackie. It's now on the floor for discussion, so I will give the floor first to you, Councillor McQueen, because you had requested it be pulled.
Well, thank you, Madam Warden, and yeah, it's, this is a small subdivision that's that's being proposed for the village of Beaversham. I don't know if Scott is able just to give a high level. I know a lot of it's in the report. I did catch some comments recently with regards, this is, I know this has sort of been something in the works over the last ten years, but I think because there's no public process, I just thought maybe it would be good just to, if Scott was able to do a bit of an overview on it. I know in the report, there's going to be a rezoning that will be coming back to municipality Gray Highlands, but just, and I think if it's an opportunity, if if somebody has any questions, they can see what's on this YouTube, they can come back, get a bit of an overview and, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Director Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Warden, and and good morning, Warden, and and members of council and and those that might be tuning in. I apologize, I didn't prepare a formal presentation for this one, but I'll I'll try to give some of the the coles notes as per Councillor McQueen's comments, so thank you for raising that, Councillor McQueen. So the proposed subdivision is is on lands in in sort of the south end of Beaversham, so just south of downtown Beaversham, if you will. The lands are approximately eight hectares in size, and and what's proposed is a new municipal road that would connect or that would extend Millbridge Road out to John Street, almost where it hits Gray Road Two in that regard. Based on on the fact that there aren't municipal water and sewer services in this area, the lots are a little larger in size than than what one would normally be used to seeing, so there are approximately sixteen, or not approximately, there are sixteen lots proposed on approximately eight hectares of land here. The subject lands are designated as a secondary settlement area in both the Gray Highlands and Gray County official plans. So so this is, this is a development that both the the county plan and the Gray Highlands Plan has foreseen in terms of looking at these lands for future development purposes. We are at the very beginning of the process now, as Councillor McQueen noted, there's also a zoning by law amendment that's being processed in in concert with this plan of subdivision application by municipal staff. So the application has been circulated to agencies and the neighbours. We don't have a public meeting scheduled yet, but that will be coming in the future, and and we're just very much at the information gathering stage. Once we have those comments, once we've had the public meeting, there will be a further report coming back to County Committee of the Whole, and certainly reports going back to municipal council with respect to the zoning amendment. And at that time, staff at the municipal and county levels will make detailed recommendations with respect to the policies in the provincial planning statement, the county official plan, and the municipal official plan. So at a very high level, that's what I have for today, but certainly happy to take any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you. I'll look to see then, we'll go to, there aren't any other hands, so I'll go to Councillor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Scott, for just giving that high-level presentation, and I know there's going to be a process process going forward. Just in a bit of the history, I think it was back in about oh seven, there was a proposal for a development just south of there. You see the the block, and it was at that time about the PPS and no more rural subdivisions, and I just sort of missed that. That we have two other ones, Eugenia and Maxwell, that sort of snuck through, but that one didn't sneak through, but it was just I I thought it would have added to that area, but anyway, it was the decision at the time of that grandfathering and and that type of thing, but just that's the back, part of that is, you know, we are looking for opportunities for development and anyway, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Director Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just in in response to Councillor McQueen's questions, he's he's very right, there was a subdivision proposed immediately south of that, and and those lands are actually in the secondary settlement area as well. So one of the things that's proposed through this current, what we're calling the Musial Plan of Subdivision, is the ability to to have have a road stub that could connect into those otherly lands if there is future development proposed there. At that time, there were changes in the two thousand and five provincial policy statement that placed a limit on communities which had municipal or private wells and septic systems, and and what we affectionately refer to in the planning industry as as the five-lot limit. And and based on those five-lot limit policies of the day, there were there were some changes made across the board, which which made it more difficult for subdivisions like that. Those those policies have since been taken out of the provincial planning statement now. So so there is, in one sense, greater consideration given to subdivisions of this nature, provided they can demonstrate that they can be adequately serviced by by wells and septic systems.
Okay, thank you very much. So I don't see any further hands then, so in that case, then, we're ready to call the vote, all those in favour? And that is carried. Thank you very much. This is item section nine, which is notice of motion. We don't have any to entertain this day, but this is my call now for any notices of motion. Oh, yes, Councilor McQueen.
I did have another other business.
Okay, I'm sorry. Could you please state what the other business item is?
Sorry, it's with regards to a brief comment about the parking lot that is owned in Markdale. That is right off the rail line. I will be putting a notice of motion for it. But we did have conversation at our last council meeting with the fellow named Mark Thompson, who's part of the Snowmobile Club in the area. I didn't realize till it came to my attention that we're no longer plowing that parking lot for snow removal, which has been a parking lot, has been available since Chapman's, I'm going to say the Chapman's plant had moved on to its new site. And we had an agreement with, at that time, Chapman's ice cream for to use as our parking lot where the building was, but it has moved. So I guess ever since then, the parking lot has been available and we had continued to plow it. And a lot of the winter months, it's been a staging area for snowmobiles coming to our area. And I'd say central Gray County, not just Markdale. But as we see out the window, winter continues to come this year and the snowmobile trails are up and running and it's been a tough year for last year. So that area has been quite busy, but I guess for the process of the budget, it was decided that it wouldn't be continued to be plowed. But it is, it's ironic for economic development and the local restaurants like Stevens and all that stuff are full of patriots, of snow wheelers and also the local gas stations. And I had two comments from two individuals I ran in at Roma where one individual, I don't know if somebody else was there, but a bunch of them came up there and one fellow got misguided and he ended up, I think, at Mount Forest, buddies missed him. The other comment was a guy who had a family up there and he got to Durham and his snowmobile broke down. Fortunately, he had two snowmobiles. He had to leave his kids on the one snowmobile in the Tim Hortons while he went back and got his machine and came back. My point is, people are using this site as a staging area for all over Gray County. And as for an economic development point, the rail trail is a multi-purpose trail is right there. And so, you know, the part of it, you know, they're trying to, they're struggling with their trucks and they're still using that. They're getting in there and using the staging area, but some of them are now moving out other areas to the fire department, fire hall out because people will still come. They're just, you know, look for another area to move their trailer and their truck while they, while they go snowmobile. So as we know, I think in the province of Ontario, there's been numbers like three billion dollars of the economic infusion in the province of Ontario for the snowmobiling industry. And we know they do come, they buy gas, they buy food and they do stay. So I guess I will, I'll be asking a notice of motion coming up with the next item for options for us to move forward.
Okay, so thank you, Councilor McQueen, because that would be more suitable for a notice of motion so that we actually have time to research and come back for a more fulsome discussion. I will look to staff if they want to make any brief comment, but the time and place for a discussion will be following what we hear in the next section and returning to county council together later. So Director Taylor, did you want to add anything? Just some initial address?
Excuse me. Thank you, Warden Matrasovs. Excuse me, sorry. Thank you for your questions, Councilor McQueen. I'm honestly not all choked up by this. It's other things. Through you, Madam Warden. Yeah, the county staff are happy to look into this further. This was one of those matters that came up for discussion as we were prepping the twenty twenty-four budget at the time in terms of the county's forestry and trails budget. And staff noted at that time that the cost for snow clearing, not just at this lot, but other lots was quite dear. And that's not a comment on the wonderful contractors that have been plowing our snow over the years. They've got their costs to recoup, including insurance and vehicles and gas and everything else, which is not cheap either. It just means that as part of the overall county budget, those costs were growing. The direction received by staff at that time was that we would continue to plow the county forest lot at Colapore, but that the lot in Markdale wouldn't be plowed any longer. We did reach out through our county transportation services staff to see if there was any other options. This lot isn't feasible to plow with our county plows in that regard. So we also asked the snowmobile club if that's something they could take care of. They said unfortunately they couldn't. And so in the winter of twenty twenty-four, we did continue to plow that lot based on the fact that when we received council's direction in late twenty-three, early twenty-four, we had already had a contract let with a contractor to continue plow. But then as part of the budget in twenty twenty-five, we didn't include those plowing costs based on council's earlier direction. So certainly, if it's the direction of council that we continue to look into this further, we're more than happy to. Councilor McQueen and Councilor Nielsen, more than happy to chat with your staff to see if there's any collaboration that could be done with any municipal lots that might be plowed in the area and try to find solutions here. We have had some comments from members of the public, including the individual that Councilor McQueen referenced, expressing their concerns about the county's decision in this regard and the desire to have it plowed again. So again, happy to take directions, direction from council and provide any further budgetary impacts on the twenty twenty-five budget in that regard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So Councilor McQueen, if you're serving a notice of motion, that will be the appropriate time to engage in a fulsome discussion to allow the members, the other members of council to be able to do their research and be prepared. So I want to leave it with the staff response to your initial and I look forward to hearing your notice of motion and then giving us all a chance to speak. Because this was just added as another item. So Counselor Boddy, I see your hand is up for a first comment?
Not with regard to that. I just said other business. I was going to look for your consent to raise.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just put that on hold. So if we could please just make sure that we follow through. Thank you for the initial response to Councilor McQueen's, to the concerns that he's brought forward. And we are shortly going to move into the notice of motion, which we look forward to hearing. So with that, then Counselor Boddy.
Two quick items that don't come with a notice of motion and one is on the homelessness. The other one would be a little pitch for SOIC with your permission. I really want to thank the staff for the report that they got out. We talked about this at the last council meeting. The AMO report on homelessness across the province and the need for money. And really pleased that the county followed through to say what's going on here and getting that out to our media. And thank you to our media that covered it and got it out to the public. It's a hard message to get to the public. I tend to get feedback on homelessness in August when people see them on the street, a lot, people that are homeless on the street. And then this time of the year, and there isn't anybody around this circle that hasn't looked out this window in the last two weeks and probably swander their breath saying, how are these people doing it? How are they doing it this time of the year? So thanks to staff for the report, but the question for either Kevin or Ann Maria is, how are we doing? How are the people on the streets doing when we look at it that?
Thank you. So I'll put that to Director Shaw.
Through you, Madam Warden. We have gone to our contingency and we've opened up many more spaces. We now have forty-five spaces in motels that are completely filled. Safe and Sound is seen between twenty and twenty-four people a night rotating through their space. We are opening up spaces as we can, as we can provide more. Good news, last night through two-on-one, we did not have anybody call in looking for a place to stay. But certainly, you know, moving forward and certainly right now, we need to continue looking for more spaces, a bigger space for Safe and Sound and some continued funding for them. This winter has just amplified the fact that we continue to see an increase in people experiencing homelessness.
Thank you for that response. And are there any other business items? Okay, so I want to play fair here. So I'm opening the other business up so that council members can bring forth another topic. Here are a response from staff, but if there's anything further before we get into a fulsome discussion, it should be coming to an agenda item near you soon. Okay, different topic. Thank you.
So just further to Mr. Skonyak's presentation and Deputy Warden's comments on Isotope. We started the Southwestern Ontario Isotope Coalition trying to get everybody involved. There's still some lower tier municipalities. Come and talk to me about it because we want you to join. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any other business? Looking around the table, Burchley, see no further hands? Excellent. Okay, so we can proceed then to notice of motion. Councilor McQueen, notice of motion.
Well, thank you, Madam Warden. And I was just going to add before I mentioned the notice of motion that there is a resolution coming from the municipality of Gray Highlands for reconsideration of that lot. And also, it was mentioned that we're plowing one county lot, but we're not plowing. So with that, I had a little bit of context as well. So I will be looking at bringing a notice of motion for options of clearing the Gray County parking lot in Markdale off the rail line. I think that's probably the best way to describe that as far as I can say. And there's one other comment. I know from our lower tier municipality, we do plow arenas with our plows. We go in, move snow around. So if it's an access issue or something, maybe we have to look at it as well, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any other notices of motion? Not seeing any on the screen, not seeing any hands raised here. Thank you. Then we'll move on to item ten, which is adjournment. I'll look for a mover to adjourn. We'll have it moved by Councilor Dobrine and seconded by Deputy Warden Milne. Any discussion? And all those in favor? And that's Carrie. Thank you very much and safe travels for everyone on your way back to your home municipalities.